Eames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Foal.
Here.
Chelman.
Here.
Patton. Churchill.
Here.
Would everyone please stand for the red.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone received a copy of the minutes from our last registered session. Much by Mr. Bonner, as by Mr. Neal. Wolfhorn.
Eames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Foal.
Yes.
Chelman.
Yes.
Churchill.
Yes.
Reports of committees. A member of council will report. Foal.
The State District Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Number, item number three is to accept and appropriate $34,500 in grant funds toward the Chillicothe Fire Department for the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras. And item number four is to appropriate $15,000 to cover the five departments' repair and maintenance costs for the remainder of the calendar year 2014. Most of these are associated with repairs on our emergency squads, which we will be looking into purchasing a new emergency squad in the near future. That's already a quick one. That concludes my, thank you, Foal.
Anyone else? Mr. Eames?
Thank you, President Churchill. The Alton has two items on the agenda tonight. Item number six is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in the amount of $7,000 for all dollars as participating local funds for 2015 to the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission on behalf of the city of Chillicothe. This is an annual request. We share the cost of this with the county. OVRDC is regional planning commission whose purpose is to influence favorably the future economic development of the 12th County Region, which Ross is a member. It have been instrumental in assisting the city and the county with numerous grants and patents. Item seven is the first reading of a resolution to accept the partnership agreement by and between the city of Chillicothe and Ross County as is related to the Community Housing Impact Preservation of CHIC program. We have been recipients of CHIC funds numerous times in the past. As with most grants, their awards amounts have been diminishing. With this partnership, both the city and the county will be eligible for additional $50,000. Because this resolution is a timely document for the appropriate time, I will ask that the way for free review will pass this through. That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Eames. Anyone else? Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, President Churchill. The committee of affairs committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's a resolution to authorize Chillicothe municipal board to apply to the local agreements and SAA agreement to extend the court's jurisdiction of the assistance program. At appropriate time, I'll have the free reading in a way.
Thank you, Mr. Churchill. Anyone else? Bring us to the finance committee. The finance committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item one is to clear the necessity for amending sections 163.3, 163.8, and 163.16 out of high ordinance to increase the city income tax levy from 1.6 to 1.8 with such increase to be used exclusively toward maintenance and repair of city streets and alleys and to place set amendments before the electors on the government's accord. Item two is to amend the same sections and increase the city income tax 1.6, 1.8. And that is an ordinance, by the way, and which such increase to be applied for the purpose of repair and maintenance of city streets and alleys. I have heard some response to our proposals and most of them are positive. I do not support a limit of like five years to 10 years. I think this should be on our tax good because our streets are going to be there for a long time, forever. Does anyone else have any comment towards this? I know the property, let's save that for old business. And with that, that completes my report. Bring us to reports of officials. Mayor Iverson?
Thank you, President Churchill. Last week, we had a regular monthly meeting with Ashley and Crystal regarding contract negotiations. We have selected a time for the negotiating sessions of the Tuesday and Thursday throughout July. The goal is to have the contract signed on the expiration date of current contract that is August 31st. And we have a fund announcement this morning to outline our negotiation plan. Secondly, there will be a community meeting this Wednesday, June 25th at 6:00 PM at the advanced conference room. This will be to discuss the formation of neighborhood watch programs for target area of operations stand-up. Phase three, this is called, residents of Spauling Streets, the rest will be dependents. South Rose Street, South Brownell Street, Wade Street, South Poplar Street, Jackson Avenue, Washington Avenue, Adams Avenue, Jefferson Avenue, Madison Avenue, Monroe Avenue, South Wood Street from East Main Street to Washington Avenue, South Douglas Avenue from East Main to Washington Avenue, and East Main Street from South Douglas Avenue. These are the target areas in our pilot phase of operations stand-up. And we'll have several treatment centers and counselors on staff to answer any questions about the community and maybe help some of them. And finally, I've notified today that most of the interior emptying out, our old buildings complete and scaffolding is start moving up around the exterior of the buildings beginning tonight. So we'll start coming outside on a four month period.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. Want to touch on Councilwoman Ames' request. It's item number six, OVRDC. Just want to point out that that's not an appropriation of this year's money. What it is, is the reason this comes out is I had a conversation with the law and records office this week. My guess is that historically, either the county or what we already see wanted some sort of recognition six months early or in advance of the actual membership, some sort of commitment from council. That appropriations, however you're supporting with the resolution, is not this year's money. It would be in 2015 budget. So just if you're curious that that's coming out of the current appropriated budget, it's not. I believe we're a member currently and that would have been, so that's in this year's budget then. So just a nuance there. And then commenting on Councilwoman Foal's emergency squad request and then the upcoming legislation to purchase the squad. I've been working with Ross County Emergency Center. Last year with the debt issuance and then earlier this year with the garbage trucks, everything we had done was on a bigger scale. The trash trucks, $300,000, not so much in and of itself, but it was coupled with the ARMC money. So that was 2.7 million. We're taking a little bit different route with this, going through a local bank, even the business local. They've got a couple of different requirements. It's a different procedure than I think the city has been accustomed to lately. But I think it'll be beneficial for the city and for the local businesses, local bank, I think. So I've got a meeting with the bank this week. We've provided that documentation that they've requested. But it's operated a little bit different because last year we got an underwriter who did a lot of that work as far as gathering, communicating, and putting out the debt issuance. So I'm optimistic that we can have a first reading for that in July. So that we'll have terms associated with that. Again, just to reiterate the tax budget, if anybody has questions, feel free to stop by the office, call, pick up a coffee. But we do need to pass that before the 15. I think we have our next regularly scheduled meeting this is 14. So anticipate the necessity to pass that. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, President Churchill. I just want to remind everybody when you do your legislation request for our office, whenever you submit legislation requests that deal with appropriating your money, we ask that you please provide the account number and the accounting from where the money is coming from and also where the money is going to. Be specific about how the money is to be used. We're trying really hard to nail down the legislation, but as you can tell, it's kind of difficult. It loses some of the translation from when you send it to us, they'll be writing back to you. So that would kind of help us. On another note, I appreciate being informed about your upcoming meeting committees and board meetings. If my appearance is requested, please notify me in advance and tell me why you want me to come so that I'm at least somewhat prepared because you have so many diverse committees and whatever. And so at least that way I can think about what we're going to talk about. Currently, we're working on a number of ordinances which we're just waiting to traditional information on. And I'd like to end on a positive note in that the case involving Chillicothe is called Rhodes versus Chillicothe. It was the Red Flex camera. We're now two weeks past their appeal date and there's been no appeal filed. So I think that we could maybe finally put that case to rest. And that is all my report.
Might we have one more politician? Jeremy Seawall is going to give us a credit.
Thank you. I'm going to come over here. I'm enjoying the air condition that I came here. Just want to come in and at least address council and provide an update with the treasurer's office. Haven't been able to this year because really it's an ongoing process for the first few months trying to catch up. So where I gave you in tonight's package is the little agenda that I'd like to follow for the update. Feel free to ask questions along the way. First thing that I want to touch on is the reconciliation from 2013. So before I took office, as most of you are aware, you know, the reconciliations were done from 2013. We hired an outside firm, Whited Signer Sands and Ray to help us with that. And I can tell you that was a monumental task to take 12 months of reconciliations and do them in a rather short time period and turn around and also feel really confident. I do that we got a lot of done and all the questions that were outstanding have been answered. One of the things you'll see, the second page of your attachment, hot off the press and auditor speaking this as well, state auditors, although it's an external firm, just released their findings today to me that I need to sign off on. And what that basically tells is that what we already know, to be true, is that the 2013 reconciliations were not done in a united manner. And that's the reason that we're in the status of course we're not. What we have done is completed that 2013 reconciliation with Whited Signer Sands. Honestly, it took probably all the way into last April and into May before we got it all done. Reconciliations were challenging, to say the least, when it comes to trying to find checks that would have bounced in water and sewer, electronic checks, paper checks, all works. I think that was probably a good bit of our challenge, just clarifying the revenue accounts that the deposits were for. And some of the things that I come across on a daily and monthly basis with charges and fees and everything associated with doing business. So a lot of work, we're complete through 2013. So we've got a few outstanding items that we want to follow up with front to 2013. There's making sure the water department, make sure we've got all of the balance checks that came across and then the ACH return is basically electronic check. So we want to make sure we go back through, double check that with the water department, make sure we got them all checked. Just because we cleared it to bank and nowhere for, we want to make sure the accounts in the water system that lay on tables as well. Nothing, nothing anymore on that. I will leave it open to, I'll just stop there. If anybody have any questions with regards to 2013, if you want to know anything, if they need anything else, or if you...
You said it took till about April, maybe 2013, so how are you meaning 2014?
That leaves into another item to be able to talk about it. Anything else before we go into it? One thing I want to touch on before we start, I know that everyone's kind of curious at fiscal caution status. I have met with a state auditor twice. Look if I verify this, it's hard to get information out of them, right? They won't, they won't give you a yay or a nay necessarily. They do have an opinion, but it's really, you just got to keep going at it and getting the information as best as you can. So best I can tell you, what I've got, they want us to be at least six months current on our reconciliations. And what we're going to do is provide them on a monthly basis, our previous month's reconciliations, starting with the mayor, June, whatever, timeline. What that means is that you're looking early to mid 2015 before they'll probably voice any opinion. And this is my opinion. I would say you probably won't see any relief on fiscal caution until next year. Just because they want to have at least six months of current reconciliation verified. That's, that's my best guess at this point. Can't get anything else out of it. By that time next year, even we'll have another audit just to confirm what we already know and how there's the reconciliation. It's the best I can give you with regards to the fiscal caution. As Nancy asked, the approach going forward, right? So just a couple of things. So you may have noticed, I gave up the treasurer's office in the administration building. Civil service is in there now, with the mayor beginning of the year. Whited doesn't need an office and I really don't need an office either, just stores and paperwork. So we're still working, I've moved, I think, three times, but we're going to go ahead and probably land in Pamela Lowe's old office mainly just for file cabinets and paperwork. There's nothing there that I need to be at. I usually just have the auditor office pick up checks and sign either there or at my house, bring them back. So the office location will probably be just right at Pamela Lowe's old office in the administration building. Got rid of the phone. You can call me anytime on my own personal phone. That's where I posted publicly, website and all. So that'll save you on what you're going to do with a patent. Maybe you can find a home for that $50 a month that we saved for that. Got rid of the phone. You know, I want to bring you, basically, you know, want your support with this and I hopefully that you trust me to judge what's going in to the office and how much work it is. But you know, one of the things we've done is outsourced to the CPA. It's going to cost you right around $12,000 per year. We have basically an agreement with them for $780 a month. I get a staff member pretty much dedicated to the city. Like to pad that budget a little bit because there are things that come up that may require extra work. One of the things I put on there is the unclaimed fund report. If you're not familiar with that, we need to do that every year as a city. That's money that technically is not ours, right? That's just money that we can't find a home for. We tried to mail it back to the person and we couldn't get a hold of them. They may have moved out of town or anything like that. So we need to register that funds to the city or to the state with that report. So I imagine this is going to require a little bit of extra effort for this first year. Go back almost two years, I think, to file the unclaimed fund reports each year. So add a little bit of low money for that into the budget. You know, when I sat back and looked at it, I actually did the first three months of the reconciliations myself just to get familiar with the volume and kind of make sure that I felt comfortable with what CPA firm is going. And I can be honest with you, there were no differences between what I found and what she found. So I mean, I felt really confident after that meeting that I had with them in April that they were going what I was expecting them to do. Hopefully, we're both going into anything. But I just want to at least emphasize that I think that's your best approach for the city is to continue that effort to go outsource to CPA firm. One, it's hard to find someone that you can hire for a part-time status with an accounting background, with financial background to do the pay rights. Down there, when you hire them, you've got a trained staff. I mean, there's 10, 12, 15 people down there. At any time, if anybody's out, needs a company, you can pick it right up with the training professionals. So I think that's a good value add for that. The price that you pay someone else, I looked at the ordinance today. We, starting out, you, based on the ordinance, you pay them $17 an hour. So I can tell you, it takes anywhere from 20 to maybe 30 hours depending on what's going on per month. So you can kind of do the math, per week, and you can kind of do the math with that. So I think it's definitely a savings just to do that for the outsourced people. Plus, as we know, the benefits will keep rising and we don't have to be like, oh, anything costs. One thing that I just want to keep emphasizing that I think that's a good thing for us, it's the city. It also provides what I think is the most important, is continuity, right? So if I don't get reelected or run for reelection or I get sick, this office still runs, right? That's what we've experienced over the last two years is that the cremish bed has some health issues. You know, we got to come, so we don't want to have that happen. I think this, this provides probably our best, best solutions to avoid that. Want to make sure we, if you have any questions, we can ask here tonight and pull it as well. One of the things too I want to touch on is the treasurer clerk. That's a position that's in the ordinance book. Again, it's spelled out in our, what do they call it, non-classified ordinance for everybody that's not unions or that big ordinance that lays out by year experience, how much their pay rate is. What I'd like to do, and because it's already an ordinance and I've worked with law and records already, is I need to hire an assistant, right? And primarily is to be a backup to sign checks. Right now, the way it works, the state will tell you that they do not like rubber stamps. They like for you to actually sign every single check with your own ink pen and that day if you can. They like the leader out there, that's kind of their rules. So I need a backup, right? We experienced that as well. What I'd like to do is just appoint someone based on the ordinance. But I don't want to pay them $17 an hour. I was thinking maybe just a flat fee. They'll be used when I'm out of the office, out of town or anything like that. There'll be somebody here locally that the auditor's office will call on and sign checks on my behalf. So I just proposed salary, an annual salary of $1,200 to be able to be on call, help me when I'm, you know, maybe over my head with paperwork or whatever there is. We can go back and forth on the money because I know that's what we're going to talk about as council, you know, looks at the budget. So I would request that, you know, we try to finalize that and maybe do something with the ordinance that adjusts the hourly wage for how it's personally paid. But it's definite, definite importance going forward. I know I would be out of town August 9th and that following week is a payroll week. So it's going to be tough for me to try to sign documents when I'm out of town, put it out in South Carolina, which leads me to my next bullet item, which is direct deposit. One of the things I've gotten there about, and I know this might take a long, long time. One of the things that can help us with the treasurer's office is not having to sign 78 payroll checks every two weeks. I still sign payroll checks. Some people like getting that physical check, maybe they can't, for whatever reason, have the direct deposit or whatever it is. But I think we all probably need to do an effort to try to eliminate as much as possible and narrow that number down to more manageable. It's a good portion of the payroll as it is. I'd maybe one, one solution to help narrow down the opportunity, I guess. One of the things I want to mention, we put this in the budget, is the auditor software. Are you going to go through an upgrade at some point in time? I can take the reason what I've seen, I don't want to be looped. It's, it's a lot of work. A lot, a lot of stuff goes through that system and I got to go through the same process applying. And I would say be very supportive of the auditor's upgrade. I think it will only help knowing his office, the entire city, all the department heads from what I've seen. And obviously, I don't know what it's going to do, the impact on what I do at the office, but I can only say it's going to get better. So I want to make sure I touch on that. And like I said, budget for the office. I think you guys recall, you know, last year when we looked at the budget, the budget went over, I'd say, $75,000 per year to run the treasurer's office. Hiring the outside firm, hiring an assistant, paying my salary of $89 a year. I'm not taking the benefits at this point in time unless I do my full time job either. But you're looking around a third of what the budget passed in from the previous year. So you're probably talking around $25,000. That's about a third of what it costs me for. I don't plan anything going up unless there are people who are interested in something like that. I'm a free outside firm. Something. Keep, keep in mind, now we get to Nancy's question, I shouldn't stop. Does anyone have any questions on what we've talked about so far? I know this is ribbon, boring information, but it is. 2014 reconciliations, Whited has completed along with myself, January through March. And we're going to fill a little asterisk on there. We'll talk about that in a couple of bullet items. The reconciliations are done as far as I can say. We've got an opportunity in the water department. They started taking credit cards at the beginning of this year, January 8th, the other day. Paid for my birthday. Not fun trying to figure this out. So there's a process in place, how the credit card company deposits the money versus what we send to our system and apply it to people's accounts. There are two different files. What you're having is basically when it comes to balance, we'll just take nine of you on council. Let's say you all sent your payments in electronically to credit cards today. Two of you decided that you didn't do it after your full-time job or before you went to come here. The credit card company stops at 6 o'clock. Let's, let's say that's two people that didn't get in by 6 o'clock. They'll send $700 to the bank, less their fees, of course. Next person comes in at 6:30. They'll still get processed, although it didn't go to the bank. And the next person comes in at 9:30. What will happen in the water department's software is that we ask for a report. Send out to the auditor's office and ask how much money we should expect to receive in our deposit. Where do they put? They put $900 because that's what process through their system. In reality, the bank only receives $100. So we have a little bit of opportunity to try to figure out this batch timing. That's what I've been working with the water supervisor, Roy, on how to work through the detail of that. The credit card company that we use does not provide reporting on their website like the majority of other credit card companies. We're us creating and we're all get out. So we're working through it. I've called them. I can talk to everybody that's involved with the credit card processing. What we're going to do, and I talked to the city of Xenia today, actually. And they had the same issue, same company, same software. What we're going to end up doing is just pretty much what they did. We're going to issue adjustments to the monthly statements that are coming out of the auditor's office. They're called the C D ones. That's basically the deposits. What we're going to do is adjust it according to what the actual bank deposits were made. We'll take, for this example, $200. We'll take that $200 and carry it over to the next month. It actually gets to the bank, it just doesn't get to the bank in the same month. We imagine it cut off on December 31st, but that is answered. So we're going to go back through, adjust those deposits that came in for credit cards and move forward. The state auditor, I've talked to him. He first, he said, nice line. The internal auditor that came in, visited Luke for two weeks or half a month with him. They were fine with that and actually that's one of the recommendations they had. So we don't overstate our fund balances and our revenue balances. That's what we're going to do going forward. So once we do that, which will be here in the next couple of weeks, we'll close January through March officially. And then right now, Whited is working on April and May. He's basically got to give, I got all paperwork to them last week. And we're going to start going. He's basically got to give, I got all paperwork to them last week, and we're going to start going forward with April and May. The goal is to have by the following, this is what I worked with the auditor's office, by the following month, third week of the following month, that's what we want to have the reciliations complete for the previous month. Right now, June, third week of June, I would expect to have May done going forward. Probably going to need a month to get in the three years caught up for April and May, and then start that, starting July on. What we've been doing, and this is fair for Whited, they basically kind of did nothing in their systems. They built a lot of things around in spreadsheets, and was waiting on a commitment from me, primarily, or us as a city. Are we going to stay with them? I committed to them that we would stay with them for at least the remainder of this year, and likely two thousand fifteen, with everyone's support here. But I think that's going to be what we're, we're going to do forward. Because of that, they felt a little more relieved that they had put more effort around kind of catalyzing their process internally. I took the program QuickBooks and did the first three months myself. I also have the budgets and everything in there, just because I'm familiar with it, I'm being on council. And I took them down to our QuickBooks file, and they're going to probably use that in the forward, which will allow me to have a way to get information anytime I want, because I'm going to get the budget and copy from them, what we could base these programs. So, the other issue that I've seen so far is return checks. We get return checks, as Luke said, in the mail, but the problem is, the ones that are paid electronically, for whatever reason, Hynke stopped providing us a paper copy of the ones that were electronically bounced checks, or whatever. So, we've got a process now. The auditors are going to report to his office every Friday, and identify if they return electronic checks from the water department. That's the two major issues that I've identified so far this year, is the water department, credit cards, return checks, and that are easy to use. Any questions? I have one more thing, I haven't done. Any questions? Suggestions? No? Does the caboose have this kind of invite yet, over there? Yeah, no, too much?
That's how I like it.
Yeah. All right, one thing, there's one item, third bullet item, two thousand fourteen reciliations. Just, we'll probably have a little education session here coming up, maybe a finding committee. I think, being on council, and also being in the treasurer's office, there is three items that is responsibility of the office. That's the fund balance, the bank reciliations, and the reciliations. So, we'll go into more detail, but basically, I've got to match the fund balances. So, what the auditor has, you know, if we have a million dollars in the bank, and there's four different accounts, four different departments, that should have X, Y, and Z numbers, I've got to make sure that that balance is the, pretty much, the, the internal balancing of it. And we've got the bank reciliations, which we know about. One of the things that we probably don't touch on too much in the treasurer's office is the budget. So, just because you have the money available, I also got to make sure the money's been appropriated. So, Mr. Fawcett's been nice to keep me on emails, and I see all the things that come through, where you guys appropriate money, I have to adjust my budget to basically be allowed to write the check, get a signature check. So, there's three, three steps in the auditor's treasurer's office that I've got to maintain. Right now, that's what the Whited clerk was external. Lot of information, boring information. Anything?
Jeremy, I'd just like to thank you for coming in and presenting this to us. We on council are concerned about all these things, and it's nice to have an update. Well done. Appreciate it. Hope to see you again some time.
Maybe. I am requiring it once at the beginning of the year. And here, the first council, we definitely hear. What I find on doing is just having basically an email, I'll see you guys every monthly bank reciliation, have all the details you want to know. All right, we got, we'll be there.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hey, I have to say this, I'm praying for my name to be told, but it felt, it felt funny.
That brings us to auditor participation. Anyone here may step to the microphone, give your name and address. And Councilman Point One, you're on the east street for the five minutes. On each subject, give fifteen minutes.
My name is Nancy Ewing, and I'm here tonight about concerns of, of, just one thing. But I am very concerned over the action taken by council in regard to the civil service coordinator decision. All of you sat, except for you, sat in budget meetings, and it was discussed last fall that the civil service coordinator decision be a half-time decision with no benefits. The mayor elected to bring back the civil service coordinator in December in a full-time capacity, with full knowledge that council was in agreement that be a half-time decision. In January, council approved a budget, and the budget called for a half-time decision with no benefits. However, the mayor, whoever's supposed to, it might be two of the stories, neglected to introduce any legislation to change it. So, the civil service coordinator remained working forty hours per week, knowing the administration knew that there was only enough money in the budget for a half-time decision. So, what does council do, except for Ms. Neal and Ms. Patrick didn't question it and go along with his request to fund money? And Alicia, I, but they didn't put your name in the paper, I don't think. They didn't, so I'm sorry. Okay. So, then, they come to council and want funds, and council rewards form management, and it is form management. And I do feel that the taxpayers deserve better, and I think that if, if there's going to be form management, then council needs to make the mayor aware of it and not reward it. So, I know that they boasted that there were lists that were completed. I worked for the city for twelve years. Sharon Rockman was the civil service coordinator at the time. And I'm here to tell you, there were current lists always. It wasn't an accomplishment, it was her job. It was her responsibility. So, I don't want to hear bragging about how many lists that they did, because that was their job, and she should have had them current. Another thing that I'm concerned about is the number of city vehicles that are going home. I made a request to the mayor regarding this, and, okay, the first one I got, Melissa Givens. He gave me an email, and he said, "I need a list of employees under your supervision, and yourself included, who are authorized to take city vehicles home, or use the vehicles off working hours, and the reasons why." Here's the response that he was given by Ms. Givens. "County DD driver, singular, take buses home also." So, county DD driver, I assume there's more than one. Mrs. Patrick, is there, do you have a trace of genetic? Do you know how many buses there are?
We can count seven, we can count five now.
Okay, so I would assume that five people taking county buses home. And I would assume that Ms. Givens is taking a city car home, is that correct?
I don't think she's, how to pound, training, and going out for bumps.
So, she doesn't drive her home back, her car, the city car back and forth from home, is that what you're going?
The only time she takes a car home is if she's going out of town for training, or she's going out for, that's very.
I may dispute that, but anyway, it is not a proper response. If you have bus drivers that work for the city school system, which I've worked for ten and a half years for, and they came, they, they drove their personal vehicle to the bus garage, and they drove, picked up their bus, went on their route, come back, picked up their personal vehicle and drove home. I would like to know what the cost of this is for them to take vehicles home, and that's on the, on the DD drivers, what that would cost. In addition, the engineering department, their, their use sound logical. By the way, Mr. Green did not get any response whatsoever. And I know that he does drive a city car home, and he lives in the city more than us, okay? Now, I assume that they get gas from the city with a gas car, is that correct? So, in other words, he can drive his city car up to West Horse Street, back and forth to work, and use that city car, because I see him around town all the time, and taxpayers are picking up the gas, is that correct? Okay. I, I would like to ask for more time. Mrs. Patrick, would you like any more time? I have two other, this and another, one more subject. Ms. Brad?
I can, I can answer this.
I can make a motion to grant, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner.
I have three extra minutes.
Thank you.
They have to, it has to get second and pass, like, I can't.
Okay, but I thought it was five minutes per subject, and I'm on the second subject.
For a person.
Oh, for a person, okay. I know that the union was here one night, and they were up here for about thirty minutes.
Time, yes.
Yeah, they were, I find. Anyway, utilities, they gave a, a response with the reasons why, everybody. But I have a concern, because I was looking at the police department, and there's a total, and I don't know if you're aware of it, of thirteen cars, city, police cars that are being taken home. And the only explanation I have is personnel assigned taking home cars are subject to call between twenty-four hours a day. Well, we've got a lot of people that work in utilities that are subject to call. We've got people in the service department that are subject to call in. And I don't understand why the dare car would have to go home. I mean, I don't, why would there be a reason for the dare officer if you don't call between twenty-four hours? So, I'd like to know what the expense of that is as well. Well, I'll tell you what, I will bring in a request, and I will, and I will put in exactly the information that I want, because I assume these people have personal gas cars, and I would like to know how much they charge for gas.
We buy gas with a sense less than compromise.
I, I, I'm not asking the price of the gas, I'm asking what they spend. Okay, what they spend. The last thing is a proposed levy. And I read Mr. Davis's letter briefly, and it sounds like he's done his homework, and it sounds like his, his concern is a plan. This administration has fallen very short on long-range planning, extremely short. It's kind of fly-by-the-seat, and my concern is, if there's money, because there has been money that was in street repair that was removed to pay pensions in the past. So, are the voters going to vote for a levy, and is the money going to reach the general fund so that the administration can do whatever they want you with it? Because they have full funds out of different areas, if they feel that it's necessary. So, I'd like to know what kind of guarantee the taxpayers are going to get in regards to this, because they have full money out of street repair to pay pensions in the past. So, is, is this going to give them free rein to do whatever they want to with the money? Or is it a law that says, and I would, it would have to be a law for me to ever support anything like that, that the money has to, and they can spend it on nothing else but that? So, anyway, that's my concern. Mayor, I can hit with you, I can use this past Friday, but I will hit with you, and I do want the exact cost per in-game tax car. Thank you.
Is anyone else?
First of all, uh.
Name please.
Oh, Jake Pickney, lead seven belt cross lane in Chillicothe. I liked your first comment about hot, on my way here tonight, Jack missed one big street stop. Preach, I'm going to ask you again tonight, want to go second street with me? I've asked you this at the council meeting, haven't I? Tonight, on my way here, I started at Second and acre street, hooker on the corner stops me, tries to get me to go out with her. Get to Mulberry, and hook her on the corner, stops me again, tries to get me to go out with her. We get to the majestic theater, girl jumps out of the chair, runs up in front like Trump, and I slam on my brakes, hold down my, "Hey, baby, how you doing? You looking for snatch? Get out my face, up the street again." It was a hot action, I went second street. I just thought you'd all be interested in that. Number two is, two weeks ago on Friday night, I noticed the city parks department had a guy picking up trash in the park. And I posted that he was on over there. But what I'm opposed to is, I got a very expensive street light, and the next morning was one of the biggest car shows in southern Ohio, in the city park, and getting my grass hard line, Shelby World was out. There's two gentlemen down there, and I'm an advocate, people saying the gap, you've heard me talk about it before, that had wheelchairs, they couldn't get through the wet grass. The grass was so high and so wet, you know what I did? I turned my car around, and it started to drop. I'm not going to pull my car out in a big tall wet grass. And I look over and all around the swimming pool, and that whole side of it, by the armory, is all my drill lines. Where this big car show is, my goodness, should have been reported to the news sometimes. That's terrible. I blame that on the parks department. Number three, I know a lot of people in Chillicothe, I've lived here fifteen years. I talk to people on the PTA cases all over Chillicothe. I don't care where it is, I do a lot of business and a lot of purposes. My consensus is, we're going to talk about black, the black market. Here's their theory, and they're against it for two reasons. One, one million dollars, they want to know where that money is going, period. You're going to have to explain that to the public with this pass. Number two, their understanding was that the money was all going to be used to black cop the streets. But when I picked up the paper the other night, and read it, and get this engineering report, it says fifty-four percent only for black cop. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been here a lot of years, the streets are terrible. I'll bet for ten percent right, on one condition. You've got to spend all that money and show your people, and send your awards, and the people in large, you need to show the people downtown, and all the people in this town, which are going to really pay the streets. So, every bit of that tax money, even if I have to pay ten percent more, should go directly on one thing, asphalt, with an outside contractor, pave the streets. And the way to do it is, divide the city in four sections, pave each one of them, quarter percent of that money each year. When we get one section done, move it over to the next one, get it down. If you want to convince the people of this city, and you want to do the right thing, which I'm asking you for tonight, is all the money should go strictly to laptoping only, nothing else, not patch puddles, because I've called the service department ten times trying to get black puddles on Little Street patching, and still get that beat up to something. See, if you want this levy passed, you want to know where the million dollars go. Number two, you need to take all that money, and must really put it on the streets where you can look at. You're not going to look at it, only putting fifty-four percent out there. Fifty-four percent would be lucky to buy you one house on the acre zone. Think about that.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yeah, that brings us to old business, Mrs. Angel.
Thank you, President Trump. I have handed out a copy of Papalina, Operation Considerations for the Proposed Income Tax Levy that's being dedicated for streets. I wish to look safe for this, and hear this, and some say what. The purpose of this handout is to add more clarity to what is involved in street and alley maintenance and repair. I've handed out a list, and I do have some examples of people, the audience, who want to see this too. A list of things that go along with street repair. We're talking about dedicated and used for street alley repair, street alley maintenance. There are standards for repairs and maintenance, as well as the hunting infrastructure, and each of these elements must be maintained to prescribe standards. So paving is certainly an important part of it. But this whole list of things on this paper, for instance, eighty-eight curb ramps. I had one resident say she'd support the levy for paving, but she didn't want to pay for curb cuts or handicap records. We don't pay for curb cuts, the new businesses come in, pay for new curb cuts. City doesn't pay for those who begin with. Handicap accessible ramps are required by law, we don't have a choice. If we do work on sidewalks, or we do work on the street, at the street corners, there's an option, we have to permit. So saying you want hundred percent going to paving, that one thing right there makes it impossible. In an eighty-eight ramp apartment, the rent rate costs about seventeen hundred dollars. With truncated domes, it's an expensive endeavor, we have to do it. That would be saying like, I don't want stop the stop sign. We have to stop the stop signs, that's the rule, the law. There are things on the list like signage, gutter repairs, paving markets. Once you paint, paint the street, you've got to paint the lines on the street. You have to put the stop bars, you have to put the median strips, you have to put boss walks, you have to put paving on the street. It's not an option. So again, you can't say hundred percent of the paving. Behind the scenes of work includes things like street evaluations. Mr. Day has worked very hard to try to come up with a plan. He does have a plan for what he wants to try to pave in a timeframe, but that plan takes a lot of time. That's not paving the street. It goes into the project, but it's not paving. And engineering, street evaluations, planning, those kinds of things are all part of the project. Another thing too, with additional funds coming in for the levy, if you have more money coming in and expecting the projects being done, you're going to need some help, outside personnel help, to do it, because you can't get more work done with single people. It's physically impossible. If I have bread that costs a dollar a loaf, and I have four dollars, I can't buy six loaves of bread. It just can't be done. I would need six dollars to buy six loaves of bread. Too much money is being already spent on personnel, it shouldn't come from the gas, the gas tax. The gas tax goes into the general fund.
No, it doesn't.
The tax, the gas tax does not go into the general fund?
No, it doesn't.
Where does the gas tax go?
Street construction.
To street construction.
Part of it goes to street construction, part of it stays highway.
Okay, I see, correct. It goes into street construction. We have personnel who work on the streets, and the money for their salary has to come from somewhere. If we don't take it from the street construction, it has to come from somewhere else. They have to be paid. So it makes sense to take it from the street funds to pay people who are working on the streets. At the review session last week, council recognized that an increase from point oh six, point oh eight on income taxes is not a solution with the idea that all roads in Chillicothe are going to go from current state to perfect even yet. Nobody, nobody is even expecting that, it's not going to happen. What it is, is a compromise that will produce results without straining pocketbooks of the residents too much. We're, we're tight budgets, we're trying to be sensitive of that, and not asking for too high of an income tax raise. Ms. Neal talked about that last at the meeting, about compromising, and trying to do the best we can, being sensitive of the residents. We're offering a solution to one of the biggest problems in our community. A license tag fee would not bring you enough money to make a dent in our road repair. No other source of funding has been brought forward, not by residents, by anyone who's against it. If someone has an idea for funding, we would be glad to hear it. But there doesn't appear to be one. The roads are not going to fix themselves, money isn't needed to do this. At this point, there's basically no other solution. Engineering department has a plan, but with inflation, there's no way to guarantee how many roads are going to be done each time. Just like from week to week, you don't know how much something in the grocery store costs. What we can guarantee is, we can't guarantee how many roads are going to be done. We guarantee, if we're going to work, because of our ability to do the most. What we can guarantee is, if we don't get more money through this levy, or some other funding source, there won't be any more roads from here, it will be the same as before.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'd like to piggyback onto that. I want to say that I do agree that with our speakers tonight, Mr. Davis, that we need to articulate our plan. If we hope to pass this, we do need citizens to buy into this, because these are their streets. It's not Chillicothe City's streets, these are our taxpayer's streets. And we do want to make sure that we explain how this money is going to be spent. And I want to thank Mrs. Ames for this presentation here, because it does break down. There's a lot more involved with street repair than simply slapping blacktop on top. In fact, if that's all we did, we would just be perpetuating the problem, because a lot of these things are problems that exist at the base level, and that's going to require a lot more work and a lot more expense. I think that, you know, trying to bring people along with what is involved is going to be something that's going to be not only a challenge for council and the administration, but I think, you know, we really want to reach out to our media and active citizens to help us explain some of these things. And we do need to be able to break down the plan into a way that people can understand. So they can understand how much a section of road would cost to be repaired under normal circumstance, and under, you know, a more costly repair. Another thing that we probably really want to try to do is, excuse me, that wasn't correct. Well, trying to get the idea of how much the roads would cost, but also, also let people know what the progression would be after this levy on repairs, how would we move forward after a levy passes, and then how we would have to move forward if the levy doesn't pass, and what that impact means. And not in a threatening way, not in a, you know, do this or else, but just a realistic look at where we're at now. The roads are at a state of decline, we need to have a revenue stream to address these problems. If the taxpayers want to make these improvements to their city, and I believe they do, when you talk to people, street repair is always probably right up there with concerns about crime. And if not, prompting crime in some cases. So if we could show them how we will move forward, and what we can realistically do with this money, I think that's going to go a long way to building support. And again, thank you for this information, because that goes a long way towards that.
Mr. McKeon, anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, President Trump. Hey, and thanks, I'm just saying, just plain nice information, great help. And I think realistically, most people didn't expect all hundred percent to go to paving, meaning all the expenses involved. Obviously, everybody wants as much to pay as possible. Just thank everyone for all the information, and that we received over the last couple of months about the street paving and everything. After looking at the proposal, and looking at Mr. Day's proposal, my, my big concern is that the current plan, and I know the plan has been changed, we're only going to, over the first five years, which has all been planned out, repair twenty-five percent of the streets. That still leaves seventy-five percent of our streets, five years from today, being poorly conditioned. I don't think, you know, this is a good plan right now to take it that slow. This is the garbage truck we visited, raising the garbage feed, and then two years later, we have garbage trucks. If we do this, two years from now, according if we stick with the plan, about eleven percent of our streets are going to be repaired. That still leaves ninety percent of the streets in really bad and sick conditions. Two years after people have been paying taxes for the streets. I just don't think people are going to really support that idea, say, hey, we passed this levy, two years later, ninety percent of those streets are in really bad condition. Five years later, seventy-five percent of them are in really bad condition. That's something that, and I think probably one thing the law would be upon, is it's going to be very hard to pass this levy, anybody look at. So I would much rather see an emergency temporary levy at a higher rate, to get all the streets completed in five years. And then, we can reevaluate, five years from now, the administration, council will be here, obviously, to evaluate that. And yeah, and people will see some good results for the money, five years from now, the streets will be repaired. And historically, I know no levy is easy to pass. Historically, emergency that means for five years, have had a better rate of passing than permanent roads. I think most people are better paid a higher rate for five years than a lower rate permanently, especially when that higher rate is going to, two or three years down the road, all the roads are going to be repaired. With this current plan, two or three years down the road, eighty-five, ninety percent, seventy-five percent of the streets are still going to be in really bad condition. So I would rather see that change put into this legislation than this asking for something that's going to pay.
So... Mrs. Ames?
I have a question, Ms. Vaughn. Have you visited other cities' websites to see their street maintenance plans?
No, I haven't, sorry.
Okay, I have visited probably twenty different cities' websites to see the street maintenance plan. There is no city that has hundred percent of the streets paved with meters. The plan generally has ten or fifteen years to go through the street rotation in the city. So there is no way that we can get a hundred percent of our streets done in two years. There is no way we can get a hundred percent of our streets done in five years, unless we are some kind of miracle worker, because none of the other cities, if you go through their websites and look at their street maintenance, which is where I got some of this, I got some of this from ODOT, I got some of this from Ohio Urban Planning, there is no site, site that I have visited, that they do do all of the streets in under five years. There's none that I've visited that did it in under ten years, except now in two years. So I don't, I don't think that's a realistic expectation to get all our streets repaired in two years.
Well, it's not two, it's five, it's a five-year emergency plan, when I'm saying five years.
But you just said that you want to get all the streets done in two years.
No, I said the five years, the bulk of it should be done in about two or three years. Right now, our five-year plan is going to be twenty-five percent in five years. Two or three years is going to be eleven percent.
I encourage you to go to some cities' websites and see their maintenance plan, and see, see what their timeframes are. That would probably help a little bit, and understand what, what is involved.
And I understand the city very well, too. And I know that basically, we've been without a, less than a street plan program for about five, six years. If we do it in five years, we're just catching up with, would have been a ten-year plan, or a fifteen-year plan. This is just, that's why I'm saying this is emergency, I don't think anyone's going to disagree, that the streets of this town are in an emergency situation. So, and I think in five years, we could do it if we put, maybe about a three, a three-quarter percent tax for five years. Give me the money, and have that bulk of money, there would be no reason why you couldn't do that in five years. And I will check some other websites and see, but I would say most of those people are working on the five-year plan, or ten, fifteen-year plan. They have kept maintaining the streets over the past ten years, but in the past ten years, we've done very little to fix it. We're in catch-up mode, and we can do it in five years.
If we're going to debate this, I suggest we have another year's session.
Yes.
Because that's not the case.
I was expecting my comments, Mr. McKeon.
Anyone else wish to comment? That, I helped do this legislation, and it says exclusively toward maintenance and repair, exclusively. That's what's put in there, strictly for our city streets, not for anything else. I don't know if I'm missing something, but I believe that's what it's there for. In order to pass this in a tightly manner, we're going to have to have a special meeting. Two of them, as a matter of fact, between now and July the second, the way I got it figured, because it's going to have to be at the court of elections by the seventh of July, at four o'clock, that's a Monday. Fourth of July is Friday. Third is, I wouldn't believe so, I believe this has to be, third meeting has to be at least by July the second. So that gives us nine days. In order to have this done properly, I believe, it has to be one meeting between now and next Monday, or have one next Monday, and then have one July the second, which is a Wednesday. How does anyone feel about this? Or make emergency legislation.
Next Monday, and then the two that, when is it after the second?
Is that all right with everyone?
What if you set the deadline, what if you set the deadline for elections?
July the seventh.
I would say get it on August sixth.
Well, August sixth is when, we've got regular legislation, and it won't be signed into law until July. While we can do emergency legislation. So if we do emergency legislation, we'll be able to do it in prior council sessions. That's what I do to use as a line at the time, that one meeting in July, and then July, and then that day to get that to the court before the richest five be settled. Does that sound better?
It does, it does, but we found out the other day about emergency legislation, it means how many votes, and where the case, and you see.
Six, need six instead of five.
Need six instead of five, you know, it could be someone besides me against this, it could be someone out of town, might be, if we get that six vote.
You can't get six votes of this council, how you going to get the public?
I'm not saying long way to the other, that's, I think we all agree it's going to be hard to get the public to vote for it, particularly what you do. Except for Mr. Trappel, sit.
Well, I'll make a motion right now, we make this emergency legislation. Second by Mrs. Ames. Roll call? Ames?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Choman?
Yes.
Trucky?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
And that motion passes. We have exclusively toward maintenance and repair of the city streets in a resolution, but it does not say that in ordinance. So I believe that that should be in the ordinance also.
Do you have the emergency center?
No. It's a separate issue. I would like to make a motion to, and...
Is your motion to have the ordinance there, the resolution, President?
Motion should be, we use exclusively toward, should be added to the ordinance. Section 1, and part where it amends codified ordinance, section 163.16, subdivision F, on the last page of the ordinance. Where it says, "Street construction, 0.2% allocated to special fund." Right there, you can put exclusively for city street and alley repair and maintenance. See that? Last page of the ordinance. Item 2. I'd like to make that motion.
Tom?
Yes.
Question. Is there a legal definition for what entails street and alley repair? That's necessary?
Yes, the law that includes probably everything Mrs. Ames has listed in her, if you start trying to list, it's a bigger one. We've had a list, because if we don't practice it, and we get everything else listed, somebody's already in our practice.
I have to make sure everybody is on the same page, that that's enough to do what we wanted to do, which is use this money for streets.
So if somebody says, and says, okay, it's exclusively for street and alley repair maintenance, but you're doing, for instance, street lighting, and they have a complaint with that, and does this list come from someplace that says, "Street lighting is a part of..." I'm not, I'm not making myself really clear, I know what I want to say. If somebody objects to us using the tax levying money for street light instead of for actual street asphalt construction maintenance, is there, how do we justify street light?
What that means is that they have to move the light posts because of street construction, and they have to relocate that light post. It doesn't mean putting a new light post, just...
So it's not like we would be doing new street lighting, this is like...
Like when we had to do it, Walnut Street, we had to relocate those utility things because the road was configured different. That's, that's what it's talking, it's not talking about just putting a new street lighting, it's if you have to move those street lights because of the road repair. They're deteriorated, you know, and you had to remove it, and it fell apart because you moved the light, and you had to replace it.
I got you, I'm just saying, um... I was just kind of thinking that, and it may be too thinking that, to say that we would repair things that were... I'm going off on a tangent, doesn't mean you're getting it.
Again, I'll make the motion to add exclusively toward the ordinance. My motion, Mr. Gray, just a second. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
Anything else in rule of business? Mr. President, President Tratchell, I did receive a letter from Mr. Ron Circle, Hightown, Ohio, and this pertains to the Marin War Memorial, and his urging of the city to have some corrective matters taken. I believe this is probably moot at this point, but I recognize that he had sent that letter and it's been provided to the county council. Secondly, I received two notices from the Ohio Division of Labor and Control. One is in reference to the issuance of permits to Fire and Stone LLC, 98 North Paint Tree First Floor, Mason Harley. Also, the transfer of permits from Walgreen Company, DDA Walgreens, 13635 of 6330 Cincinnati Dayton Road, Little Town, Ohio, to Walgreen Company, DDA Walgreens, 07799 of 850 North Bridge Street here in Chillicothe. And that's all I have, President, for today. Make this plausible. Do we have any new business? Mr. Bonner?
Yes, yes. I didn't think, I actually wasn't trying to give no amount of approval to Miss Neely to have more time. I was just making a motion that council could vote on, right? I don't think any council member could do that. So that's what I was trying to...
Take seven votes to change the rules.
Right, that's what I was trying to do. Next time that happens, maybe we should make sure it's stopped.
Make a motion.
I did, I said I'd make a motion, I wasn't trying to grant it.
That's okay, I answered.
I do want to add something. I collected the point in my opening report that I would like to waive the three-read rule for items number three and four, so that we can accept that money and also appropriate those repairs.
Motion to excuse Mr. Taub.
Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
Any more new business? Community assignments and meeting dates. The assignment, assignment 1481, community affairs. A request for legislation to appropriate $2,470 to purchase computer software to upgrade technology from this fourth project department. Assignment 1490, finance committee, a request for legislation to approve the city of Chillicothe Act for the year, fiscal year 2015. And this concludes that. We have a Wednesday meeting, neighborhood meeting at Transit. What time is that? 6 o'clock there? And that's the only meeting that I have scheduled here, which brings us to legislation. Item 1. First reading of a resolution declaring the necessity of amending sections 163.03, 163.08, and 163.16 of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe in order to provide for an increase in the city income tax levy from 1.6% to 1.8%, directing that such increase be used exclusively toward maintenance and repair of city streets and alleys within the city of Chillicothe, and resolving that said amendment should be placed before the electors at the election to be held November 4, 2014, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Item 2. First reading of an ordinance amending sections 163.03, 163.08, and 163.16 of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, in order to provide for an increase in the city income tax levy from 1.6% to 1.8%, and directing that such increase be applied for the exclusive purpose of repairing and maintaining the streets and alleys within the city of Chillicothe, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Item 3. First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $34,500 in grant funds awarded to the Chillicothe Fire Department for the purpose, for for the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Roll.
So that we can put this money to use as quick as possible, I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
Second by Mrs. Ames. Roll call. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item 4. First reading of an ordinance appropriating $16,000 to cover fire department repair and maintenance costs for the remainder of calendar year 2014, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Roll.
I would like to please waive the three-read rule so that we can do repairs and repairs.
Second by, Bonner? Roll call. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
Item 5. First reading of a resolution authorizing the Chillicothe Municipal Court to apply for the Victims of Crime Act grant and the State Victims Assistance Act grant to extend the Chillicothe Municipal Court Victim Witness Assistance Program, accepting said grant if awarded, and declaring an emergency. First reading. Request that we waive the three-read rule. Second by, Mr. Bull? Roll call. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
That motion passes. Roll call, ordinance. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item 6. First reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in the amount of $7,012 as participating local funds for 2015 to the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission on behalf of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio. First reading. Item 7. First reading of a resolution accepting the partnership agreement by and between the city of Chillicothe and Ross County as it relates to the CHIP program and declaring an emergency. First reading. Mrs. Ames?
Yes.
Second by, Mr. Showman? Roll call. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Tratchell?
Yes.
That motion passes. Roll call. Ames?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Bull?
Yes.
Showman?